Being 6:30, I call this April 1st meeting of Select Board to order. Ms. Jakes?
I'm here in person.
Yes.
I'm here as well.
Adam Harrison is here.
John is here. He's here.
Okay. Is there someone who can see the people who are dialed in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Greg is on and I keep a watch on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, you probably should. Sorry. We can do the whole thing over again because it's not recorded.
I don't think, it's just, I don't.
Okay. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda?
Hearing none.
Go to Chairman's Report. I don't have a Chairman's Report. The next item, yes.
We don't have liaison. Never mind, I'm on there in another capacity.
Okay. At this point, we usually look at the action items. The only one that I noticed is the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee.
I had some notes on that. I think we completed our action as a board.
Yeah.
And that should be removed from the action list. Hope has an action to go and come back to us. But we gave her feedback, we're done until such time as a citizen comes forward with information. Let's see. There was something else. Oh, regarding the, did you have anything else?
No, I have nothing.
I noticed the actions regarding the Downtown Improvement Committee needs to change to a three-year term, but it's not clear to me what has to happen. What is, what needs to take place to make that happen? I was surprised to see that on the action items. I guess it's one, I've never changed the term.
We had, we had.
Greg, I think wanted to say something.
Yeah, so you can make that a three-year appointment when you do the next round of appointments in June.
Okay. So, there's nothing we need to do to the charter? It's just when we do that, June? Okay. And are we miss, did we complete the action to notify the committees and all of that?
Yep.
So, all of the board chairs?
Yep.
Okay, that was done.
Great.
And I'm not sure we should take the proposed human rights off the to-do list because we still need to hear back. And that is something that, that.
That's kind of the reason why, I kind of kept it on there.
Yeah, I kind of think that needs to stay on there. It's not been finalized.
Is that a quarterly tickler?
Take my name off of it, I have no action on that. I took that action because of the work we were doing on the governance project.
Right.
And we were waiting to give her a response. We've given her that response. So, if somebody else has an action they'd like to take, I don't have one.
That can be a quarterly tickler.
Do we even know if Hope is going to come back and when?
We don't know, but we could put something in June.
When that time comes, then we'll see.
But I still think it's an, it's an item that we weren't, sorry, Brian.
Debbie, could you contact Hope and point out to her that we're waiting for her?
Oh, she already knows. She's contacted me.
Okay. So, she knows that we're waiting for her and we're not going to both sit here forever?
Right. I will follow up with her again.
Yeah, let's perhaps get an estimation as to when she's going to come back to us.
Sure.
The last thing I had was the action on the North Shore Regional 911 review. We did get the metrics sent out to all of us. I, with all the reading we had for this meeting, I haven't had a chance to look at them yet, but I thought it might be good to have the discussion on that when we do the discussions with the police and fire chiefs. That's going to happen at the next meeting?
Sure. Let's put the review of the North Shore 911 on the board next week.
When did we get those?
The police chief mailed them to us and Debbie did as well last week sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
It was a long report.
Yes.
I noticed that.
Yeah.
Which is why I didn't have to.
Okay. Is there anything else in the actions that we need to?
Other than, we've got the update on Arbella and the National Grid update. That's not a specific item on the agenda, but we do have it here. So, Greg, were you able to, did you hear back from Sabitha in the 48 hours?
Yes, I did. So, that started in motion a series of back and forths with Black Earth and different people at National Grid. And confusion over whether or not all the necessary permits were in hand, indeed they have it in hand. Some of the National Grid folks knew it, but not others. We are still waiting to hear about the delivery date for that transfer. So, that's still, still, we still haven't got confirmation of a delivery date.
On both of those, so the delivery date as well as the other person on Arbella, she was going to, seven Arbella, right? She was going to get information about that as well?
Yeah, she said she was going to follow up on that. I don't know the status of that.
Right. And then the other is on the agenda, so.
So, I bet that probably should move to the 16th.
National Grid?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wonder if we could have National Grid come back now?
Her performance the last time made it fairly clear that she can't produce information that she doesn't have. And I think it would be fine if she gave, got the information to Greg or Debbie when it's available. And perhaps since we're putting more than on Debbie's list, you could give a nudge and say you would like, we would like to know what's going on on Arbella as well as Black Earth.
Okay.
Right. The next item is to take up the town meeting. And the order on our agenda is to begin by finalizing the budget. I guess the thing to do with the budget is to ask if there are any, what we would do in town meetings, are there any holds? Any, I'd like to hear about items that people have questions on. Becky?
I have a question regarding the Harbor Master. And this, I don't know that this would specifically fall under this budget, but it pertains to the retirement group that he's classified in. And Greg, is that something that, how would we, how do we do that? Just because he, he's.
Yeah, it's separate from the budget process, but it would be requesting, making a formal request to County Retirement that the positions in the Harbor Master office be reclassified.
And how, just because.
Basically a petition process to the Essex County Retirement Board.
That's what you were saying, Debbie. Okay. So, they make the designation or the determination of the designation?
Correct.
Okay, well, then I will bring this up at another meeting. Debbie, may I add that to an action item?
Sure.
Let me put it to June.
No.
It's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Becky, do you have anything else on the budget numbers?
No, not now.
Right. Debbie?
Just on the, I just wanted Greg to review with us the new positions that are being added. Just a brief overview of why they're needed and I guess the rationale for a permanent position rather than contractor labor to fill the gap. There aren't that many new positions, but just wondering if you could run through that.
Sure. So, just continuing with the Harbor Master. So, there's a proposal to add a new deputy Harbor Master full-time position to the department. It's currently the department with one full-time person and then seasonal workers. And just over the, over the twelve or so years that we've had the current Harbor Master in his position, certainly the activity on the waters and the administrative workloads have increased fairly significantly. And the proposal is to add a new deputy position to help with that workload. So, that's one position that's being proposed as being added. Second position is, as you indicated, we are inviting a series of large capital improvement projects. And typically, one way to manage those projects is to hire a clerk of the works that is often through an engineering firm. The cost of that as an outsourced clerk of the works is, you know, pushes 175 to 200,000 a year for full-time work. And we can, we can do that in-house in the 130 to 150 range. And so, we would get better, better service than our own full-time person and it would save dollars in the long run as well. So, it would not be permanent. It would be a position that would be envisioned for the next four or five years depending on where Pepperdose facility projects go after that timeframe. We would have to reevaluate. And the position that folks have expressed a high level of interest that might be hired for this position are folks who would not be vested in our retirement system and therefore we would not have to worry about the long-term legacy cost of a retiree. It takes a minimum of 10 years to become invested in the system and it's not envisioned that this position would be in place for that many years.
If I may interrupt.
So, that's a second, that's a second full-time position?
May I interrupt just quickly? When you give the number, the relative costs, did you include the non-retirement benefits? Health insurance?
So, when you're, so, so again, if you're not vested and you're not eligible for.
Not OEB, but just what? Is that, is that 150 just salary or is it salary plus?
Is it fully loaded?
It's fully loaded, yes. It does not include legacy costs. Because they would not be vested and therefore they would not qualify for the legacy cost.
Thank you.
I also wanted to point out that the Assistant Harbor Master position, excuse me, also comes into play with succession planning.
And so, there's also been discussion with Essex about using some of our Harbor Master time to help them get their harbor under control. Not, not on the water, but in terms of.
Organization.
Organization, getting everybody who's actually moored in the harbor on a mooring list and with a paid per bed.
But that doesn't, does that come into play with the?
It comes into play because that's, that's something that this person could do in the winter in addition.
And Essex would pay us.
And Essex, in theory, Essex would pay us to do it.
The other thing too, we should talk to, at some point, we get a change of face of who interacts with the government agencies. And with eye on then starting to back away from these responsibilities and government agencies becoming more and more comfortable dealing with this deputy master, deputy Harbor Master makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, that's a succession plan.
Yeah.
What else, Greg? I'm sorry.
I have a clerk of the works question. So, is that going to be paid for through, say, the bond issue?
So, what the Finance Committee recommend, is recommending is that, so we reduce the amount of bonding and we added the additional staffing cost to the DPW budget. And it's being split between the three departments, the DPW, the Highway Department, the Water Enterprise and the Sewer Enterprise.
Okay, so those, those numbers, we don't see those numbers right now, but we will?
They're in the budget, you don't see them itemized, but they are in, they are in the, you know, the highway salary line.
Yes.
And they're incorporated in the indirect cost of the water and sewer operations.
Okay.
So, to that point though, by not including it in the bond and making it part of operations, there is no check and balance to make sure this is only a five-year or four-year position. If it's not part of the project money, that means it's built into the operations budget. And if Greg, for some reason, is not here in four to five years and we are not here in four to five years, that becomes a permanent position. So, I'm not completely sold on the Finance Committee's recommendation on that position. And I think it, I understand generally that you want the salaries of employees to be in the operational budget. Generally, that makes sense. But if we are targeting this as a not-permanent position, like you said, then it does not make sense to, in my mind, to put it in the operational budget. It's too easy just to stay in there forever.
It can go either way. It's, it's ultimately a chair call. From an accounting perspective, this is, it's a little more problematic to put it into the capital, but it certainly isn't impossible.
Okay, John, how about you?
Yeah, I'm just kind of cogitating about that. And I understand the bond issue thing. I think I would prefer it in the bond because then it sticks out.
Right.
Otherwise, it doesn't, although, and all of a sudden, yeah, somebody doesn't just have not very much to do. Work always expands to fill the void.
100%, 100%, you're right. And I guess I would feel better, I mean, I think, I think the probability that all six of us, you know, are going to be here four, five years from now is not good. And there will be no institutional memory to have a check and balance on this position. So, I agree with John. I think it's best from that standpoint to, to be part of the bond.
Becky?
Given that I don't have a background in finance and it seems that you all understand it, I would defer to either FinCom field or what you all, just because I don't have a great.
Just saw my checkbook, you know that I don't have any background in finance, but I'd prefer to, I'd just defer to the Finance Committee on this one.
Okay, so Finance Committee is saying, put it in the operation budget.
I'm okay with that.
And although none of us may be around, the Finance Committee goes on forever.
Yes. Sarah's going to be like seething, talking about.
Could I ask Greg?
Sarah Melchus has her hand up, if you want.
Okay. Yes, Sarah, please.
Yes, so when the Finance Committee looked at this, we felt by having the money in the operating budget, it's more comfortable than just having it rolled into the capital budget. And when we made this change, the capital budget was reduced by 400,000 and the salary line was 90,000. And there was no increase in the other lines such as medical, so the medical was already covered enough in the budget. So, it was a significant delta and it didn't make sense to us that you pay interest and service, that you pay service debt on a position.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Sarah, could you explain what you think the accountability is to make sure that this position is not a permanent position and only four- to five-year position? Because that's the piece that I think John and I are questioning.
I think we need to make sure that Andrea has that in records.
So, how would that appear in the budget book next year, for example, Greg?
So, in terms of the staffing charter or DPW, it would be flagged as a temporary clerk of the works position. So, that would track from year to year in that, in that sense.
And how does that work when you say it's flagged? How is the tracking connected to that?
A, we could call it out as a separate salary line. That would be one way. And two, just sort of a staffing chart, it would be, you could indicate it as a temporary clerk of the works position.
I would be comfortable with that if it was a separate salary line specifically stating not to exceed five-year position, you know, or some, or some, but I don't language in there.
I think it needs to be, I think that, I think you need to have the flexibility.
I understand, but there's got to be a flag to the potential next town administrator and the next, you know, select board to know that this was not intended to be a.
Greg, is, yeah.
Chuck has his hand up, Ann.
Chuck, please.
I was just going to echo Greg's thoughts. I mean, I do have a, you know, hierarchy. I have, you know, I have the people in my, sorry, I have the people in my budget, you know, I can break it out accordingly to make it temporary. I would just say I actually do have a tracker for it in this is, we actually front-loaded positions when we were expecting retirements and then we reduced accordingly when those positions retired. So, this is, in my mind, the exact same thing. I understand that some people may not be here, myself included, or, you know, people on the FinCom or on the board, but I think it's pretty easily, you know, addressed within the text, not necessarily the budget lines.
My question would be is, given the capital project list that we have and looking and saying, oh, this is three or four or five years, frankly, we have 10 or 15 years' worth of capital activities here. And right now, I know you Chuck, between you Chuck and Nate, you kind of split up your clerk of the works hats on the various projects that we got right now. We're going to be taking on more, which is more than what you and Nate can deal with and that goes over there. But is, do you envision that just the ones that are on this bond issue right now are the only ones? Because you know, we've got all kinds of other things that are lined up in the coming several years. And does this perpetuate that position?
I definitely think that's potential, but I, you know, it's definitely going to be year to year based on the projects that we have going on. Right now, this position is, you know, I'm targeting more along water and sewer because those are the immediate upgrades that we are going to be making. But, you know, it certainly could go longer, but that's not my intention now. But, you know, I'm willing to have that discussion four or five years from now. It's just impossible to say, so you just got to do it one way or the other.
Well, in order to revisit that, yeah, maybe it should be water sewer clerk of works. So, we know what's defined for that.
Yeah, and I guess I would just look at it a couple ways is, you know, we're always, you know, the select board, whether it's you guys or anybody else, you know, is looking at, you know, where are we at and what are our salaries? So, like, you know, I think it's going to be a discussion no matter how we do it, you know, years to come. I guess the only other thing I wanted to make clear is, like, this is not a nice-to-have. Like, we have to have this position.
100%.
Whether it's in-house or, you know, hired out because of the procurement law. So, just like when the schools do their multimillion-dollar projects, this is us doing, you know, the town doing multimillion-dollar projects and we have to, you know, adhere to the same, you know, state procurement law. So, I just want to make sure that's understood and, you know, that's why, you know, we can roll in or out if that's what, you know, the force deemed necessary.
Let me see if I can summarize. Kathy is, was concerned that if it was part of the salary line, it would sort of get folded in and the next time we needed a clerk of the works, we'd get a new one. So, we'd have two. And what Chuck, what John is concerned about is, we've got a lot of projects coming up. How can we guarantee that this person won't go on for more than 10 years? And my summary is, if the person has done a good job on the previous projects, then it will be worth our continuing and allowing him to join the retirement group.
It's more around not stating right now, there are some times when you hire a position that you really are figuring in for the long term. When Greg mentioned this particular position, he didn't position it that way. He positioned it as a four- to five-year project management-type role. And those type roles typically are not baked into an operational budget. So, that was, I think, what stimulated the conversation. As long as there is some phrasing in the staffing lines or whatever, in my mind, as long as there's some phrasing in here that distinguishes this as something that needs to be relooked at, you know, in four or five years, I'm fine. I just don't want to blend it in with all the salary line items so that there is no check and balance on what our intent is today. That's all.
Okay, so are we attached to leave this as the Finance Committee recommended? Stay with the Finance Committee recommendation?
As long as it's notation.
As long as it's a line item.
Yes, right over line item, yeah.
Greg, what's your third person?
So, there's a proposed increase of hours for our Communications Coordinator, Tiffany Marilla Sturz in that role and has been, she started a little below halftime, we moved her up halftime and then to third sign and then three-quarter sign, this takes it up to full-time. So, it's an expansion from three-quarter time to full-time. So, that's the third position. And then the last position is not really adding hours, but it's consolidating a number of part-time positions into one. So, we have land use clerks from the Planning Board, from the ZDA, or the Sewer District Commission, et cetera, and trying to consolidate that position into a single person who can then make sure that, you know, the left hand knows what the right hand is doing in terms of different boards and the different permitting processes that are underway, someone who can be in town hall during the week to provide customer support for applicants who are either seeking information before applying or during the middle of application process and they need some input as to where it's going next, et cetera. So, this, this would, as I say, consolidate those part-time positions into, into one full-time position.
On that one, how are the humans that are currently doing that work being impacted?
So, there would, so we have some folks who are sort of hanging on and helping us out, but they are, some of them are looking to let go of the role they're currently playing and others may, may want to apply for this full-time position.
Okay. So, we're not adding funding, it's just truly a consolidation of hours. So we're not adding funding, it's just truly a consolidation of hours into a full-time role?
Correct.
Okay. Was there anything on the assessors office? Because we added a lot of salary, you know, some big salary increases there. Was that additional hours or adding existing humans or, you know?
It's not part of the shift. So those, the assistant, the assistant to assessor has been half and half, building inspector and land use. So that, that shift is still a work in progress, depending on which way we're going with that. So it depends on some final discussions that are needed and depending on final hiring and who takes on what work.
Are there questions?
I'm not sure I understood that last part, that was a bit confusing.
So right now, the dollars were split between the building inspector and the assessors.
Right.
And so the new version shows all of those dollars in the assessor.
Okay, but then, so it's just a shift, not a, not an increase overall to the budget?
Correct.
Okay. And those, those are the only positions?
Yes, goes on.
Yeah, a couple of questions. On the itemized list of money appropriations, the library, I know, needs 100, I guess up to $150,000, but that money already exists because it was appropriated in a previous year, correct?
Correct, so it would be redirecting.
Right. But the itemized numbers for walkway repairs, building assessment, reappropriation adds up to 50,000. And I'm just trying to match that up with 150 that we need.
So the original capital allocation was 200,000 for the restrooms, new ADA restrooms.
Okay.
Those have not moved forward.
Correct.
Based on a series of challenges. And so that 200 is being proposed to be divided up into three, three new uses. One is the 150,000 for the matching funds for the state grant to look at a possible renovation slash expansion of the library. The second element is to fund that 435, a detailed assessment of the building, which is a precursor that's necessary for the submission of the grant to the state, grant application to the state. And then the third element is 6,500 for improvements to the walkway, the.
Okay, all right, so I understand. I understand what's, what's going on there. On the same list, I don't know if this is the right time to bring that up. We gotta get more police tasers, and I don't know if you're the guy to answer that question.
I noticed that.
We had a long discussion at the last time.
Yes, we did.
Right, so it's not, it's not more, it's just the lease payment for the ones we have?
Those are lease payments?
We purchased the tasers for the officers on a lease-to-own arrangement.
Okay. You will get that question on April 24th.
Yes, you will.
Or Alan will.
I'll make sure the chief is prepared to answer that.
Okay, all right.
I forget if we're in the last year, we've got another year to go, but that's a detail I can find out.
Okay, my questions on the budget, in legal and professional services, you're up $40,000. We overspent our last budget by at least that amount, I think. Is that enough?
You know, it's a good question, Ann. Historically, it'd be, it'd done pretty well. This past year and a half is, has been a whole different story. It's been a much higher burn rate on legal expenses. Is that a blip and will level back down, or is it a new trend? I am not sure. I fear it's more of a new trend, but we will, we will see. So is it enough? You will see that we are asking for a supplement for this current year, which is one way to deal with, we're not having enough, and also using the FinCon reserve account or shifting dollars that have come in, you know, expenses that have come in the lower freeze-up some dollars and some line items that we can shift towards, towards legal in the last couple of months of the fiscal year.
So you, you think that this is, may not be enough to cover our legal expenses, but there are other ways of covering them, and we can look at this question again next year and make adjustments. This is not going to leave us in a major hole.
Correct, that's, that's my feeling on it, exactly.
Okay.
Ann, if I may, one clarification. These are all the legal expenses, right? Because I think a year ago, we were talking about perhaps dividing it up into the various departments or groups that tend to use legal fees so that you knew what was going on in those areas, but this captures all of the legal costs?
It does, we have not divided it up.
Okay, I can't remember what happened from that discussion.
You know, so, but we do track what, you know, what dollars go for what.
Yes.
So we are all, we are able to do that analysis of where those dollars are going.
Ann, if I, to John's point, I think maybe it might be good to have some information in advance of town meeting about how that's been used today.
Right. Yeah, for example, if we had a lot of zoning issues over the past year that our people were trying to do themselves and needed a lot of legal help with that, the 40A work is being done by a lot of consultants with a lot of experience, so maybe the legal costs won't be as high.
And there's also a lot of needing to go to town council for planning board and things like that, but it might be good to have some general idea of what's going into defending the ZBA at this point, too.
For our next meeting, could Andrea produce a, an overview of where the legal expenses go?
Yeah, she has that ongoing. She, she updates it regularly.
I guess it's not, could Andrea have it, could we have it?
Yes, absolutely.
One clarification, it says legal slash professional services. Can we assume that this is largely just legal, or are there other expenses, professional expenses of significance that are in that pot?
It's primarily legal, there are occasional other professional services in there. But the bulk of it is certainly legal.
Okay.
My other question is the conservation commission salaries, which went from 70,000 to 15,000.
And then you also see a large increase then in their operating expenses because now we contract the agent as a shared agent with Harrington.
Ah, okay, you've explained that to me three or four times. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm proud.
Okay, with that discussion, is there a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Second.
A friendly amendment, just to make sure that with the note on, with the flagging of that one position.
The DPW position.
Yes.
DPW clerk of the works, do we identify?
Mm-hmm, makes sense.
Makes sense. Further discussion? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann says yes?
John says yes.
Excellent. Okay, we have, now, that's the operating budget as presented. There's also a presentation of just where the revenues are and the budget summary. Is there anything in the budget summary that anyone would like to discuss?
We will get to some of those when you go through the articles.
Yes.
Yes.
No one seems to be jumping up and down? Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Starting on the warrant. Are there questions on Articles one or two? Article three, which is the North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District? Nobody? Okay, that's 243,385 dollars. Gone.
Gone to good use, I hope.
So that's what you just did?
Are there, Becky, do you have questions on Article five?
I do not. No, I read them over and found that if they were moved from one, they were put turned out.
Not at this point.
Kathy?
Nope.
John?
I'm good.
Okay, my questions are, what were the storm damage repairs that were removed?
Put it in another area.
In the last, in the last couple, three years, we have started to add a line item for generic storm damage repair in that 25 to 50,000 a year range. And frankly, it was just trying to make the numbers balance that it was taken out this year.
Okay.
You know, we have, we have some old damage still that we have not addressed fully. The West Beach or Stinky Beach wall there is certainly not as strong as it needs to be, so, but that's a very big project. So we do have some funds left in the storm damage line, the capital line in previous years, which is the main reason why I just recommended not putting more money into it for now.
And the other one was the fire engine replacement fund. And I understand that we just bought a ladder truck and this year we're buying an ambulance, but we still have other fire-related vehicles that are going to have to be replaced in the future?
Yeah, so again, a question of value with that large outlay for the second ambulance, we were, we were hitting the can a little bit on replenishing the replacement fund, talking to the chief. Obviously, he'd prefer to have somebody put in there every year, but I believe he feels that the schedule can, can do okay with the year's delay of starting to replenish it. He's listening in if he wants to chat in on that, but I think that, I think that's where we left the discussion.
Is Sarah still, Mellish still available? Sarah, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, I think that the fire chief gave us a long-term replacement plan and that by putting the 470,000 into the ambulance, because we're, we're appropriating money for the ambulance two years before it will be delivered. So therefore, based on the, the recent acquisitions we've made, we felt it was appropriate to just put all the money towards the ambulance and then restart the replacement fund next year.
Thank you.
And in order to order the ambulance, you have to show that you have the full appropriation.
You can't order half an ambulance?
You can't order half an ambulance.
All right, question, can, I know that it was about a year ago that we looked at the fund schedule. Can, Greg, can you ask Chief McNeely to kind of update that, or maybe Andrea updates that? I'm not sure who does, because I've kind of lost track of where things are with the ambulance, which was not on that schedule per se, and now it's here, a 470 hit. And of course, the ladder money is now spent, so things have shifted around a little bit.
Chief is on it.
So yeah, so the chief.
Chief there? Good.
Yeah, yeah, so when I submitted my apparatus replacement plan to both the board and the FinCon, the ambulance two was added, just because the time delay to get an ambulance is two years, and if, you know, God forbid something happens to our current ambulance, then you just can't go to the dealership and pick them up. So that was added, I want to probably say, five or six months ago during one of my last reviews.
Okay.
So we can get you that new schedule.
That'd be good.
The chief, the chief has that laid out.
Yeah, I'll send it over to Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Article five? Okay, is there a motion on Article five? Are we doing the motion?
Yeah.
I'm trying to approve the warrant.
As we go?
As we go. We did not approve one and two. We did approve.
I only did one, two, and three, I thought it was.
One, two, and three are just sort of.
Two, three.
So I think we, we did vote on four.
Okay, motion. Maybe we can ask Debbie. Debbie, what do we have?
I didn't hear that.
I didn't.
Okay, fine.
My impression was that we did one, two, and three.
Okay.
Do you want a motion on these?
Sure.
Okay, motion on four, on four and five?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Article four and five. I'm trying to think, did we change anything in four? I don't think so.
That's where we talked about the DPW position. That's why I think we already approved that.
We already approved that separately in an earlier task. Okay, so.
We approved four.
So then I'll just make a motion to approve Article five.
Did we just do it on the?
We approved it under the budget.
Under the budget.
But we haven't approved the article.
Okay, got it.
So we want four and five.
All right, so approve Articles four and five as shown here.
Second. Further discussion? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann says yes?
John says yes.
Article six, which is the lock service.
I think we need to, whomever speaks on this needs to make sure that it's made abundantly clear that this, we're not, this is going to be a self-sustaining enterprise, or it will cease to function if it goes forward. So we're just, this is essentially to get it started.
Yeah, so I agree. I think the article language needs to be beefed up to, to make it clear, we're not intending to use taxpayer dollars. But how is Byon doing with the signups? Because he had until April 15th, I think we gave him, to, to get the signups.
Yeah, I haven't, haven't found the latest count, but he was pretty, pretty pleased with the response he's been getting. I don't have an exact number for you.
When is the deadline for getting these, this warrant approved?
We set the 15th of April.
Okay. The 15th of April is, is the deadline for signups.
I'm asking about the warrant. I'm, I'm asking about the warrant, Greg, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. The warrant needs to be, we, we need to finalize the warrant tonight. It needs to be posted by Wednesday.
And we can change on the floor.
Yeah, okay. I wouldn't be comfortable going through unless he has the requisite signups.
I mean, we can, we can add a sentence or two here in the warrant if you, if you like.
I, I, I think having a sentence that says that this will be a self-sustaining enterprise. And that the funds that we're allocating will be paid back.
Even though whomever speaks on it will say that, I think that needs.
I, I think that's an important thing to convey to the people.
Absolutely, I agree. Yep.
So, so Bayon's had about a week, I think, that went out, I'm looking here, the 25th.
He's had two weeks, hasn't he? Oh, it's only been.
25th of March.
He only sent it out one week?
That's fairly reasonable. Also, could you put parallel language in there after fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25? I assume the operating expenses are coming out of each of those years, so you should use the same language. Call them both launch operating expenses. The other one's called to pay the operating costs. And I think it should read the same.
Yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, that can be parallel.
It should just read the same, so that you're, everybody knows you're talking, that money's going to the same pot.
Do you want to put anything in there about, because we had, as part of the proposal, that the launch service would be retired if it didn't, you know, make a profit after, or break even after three years? I mean, we had very specific language in the proposal. Would it make sense to put that here so it's very clear? It's not a never-ending drain on the taxpayers?
It doesn't prove to be profitable.
Right, yeah, it's not profitable, you know, that language we.
I, I guess, I don't understand Item C. I understand that we have to pay up until July. And I understand that we have to pay for the boats.
Right.
In advance. But the other 41,000 should come out of the receipts that he should have in hand on April 15th.
Maybe. I, I mean, the point should be made that that money is getting paid back. A and C is coming back into the treasury. And that's not necessarily what in here, I mean, B is over a period of time.
Right.
But A and C should be coming back in fiscal year '25.
Immediately, yeah.
So, I mean, maybe C should be, I understand you need the money for A, but maybe C should be up to 41, and obviously, it's going to be a lot less, but.
So you can't, you can't?
Oh, you can, you gotta have a specific number, yeah.
Yeah, you have to approve a specific number. You can't say up to. Or not exceeding.
And we are giving it three years. So if we're saying that it has to be at least break even in three years, are we saying, okay, it can be supplemented for One, but still has to be paid back?
I thought we were requiring that he have people with checks.
Yep.
Yes, but we were giving him, the, the number of checks in hand, the number of customers that we were asking for this year was more than they had last year.
Yes, about a third.
So we were going to give Bayon a few years to find the right price point and customer count to make sure we're consistently breaking even, or better yet, making a profit.
Okay.
I was just trying to dig up the language that we had.
So I think we need to be careful about not helping it to give it a shot by so not funding.
Would the ceiling, would the limit be that he would have to have this year to go forward?
Just, I, it's been like three weeks since I've done it, and honest to God, I can't remember. Just bring it up.
He had 55, and if he's going, about 55, and you're talking 70.
We definitely need to go up, but we weren't, I just want to make sure I get the language straight. Greg, do you have the agreement, the proposal handy?
I think, yeah.
Yeah, give it right handy.
So, yeah, the intent was that it would go forward if he was close. And that's, in fact, in the first year, we weren't anticipating repaying the capital. We saw that coming in year two, so there's a little bit of a cushion there. But ultimately, it's going to come down to a general call come, you know, mid-April here. Do we think we have enough people to justify it going forward? We can make that call at the town meeting, whether or not to recommend passing this over if we don't feel there's a sufficient number. But the, the language in the, in the business plan said that it would, the operations would have, you know, would have three years in order to break even, so.
Right, but there was some language in there about not losing more than 10%. I just, I, I. We're struggling to find it.
Oh, I know.
Right, doesn't remember that.
The, the, the language talked about, you know, it would, it would, it would be within 10% of total cost.
Right. Can't find it, I just can't find it right now.
I've got a summary of the stuff here, but I, I don't have this, I just have a break-even analysis and Project P and L comment.
It was the, what, what week did we discuss this? It should have been in our package, the full.
When was that, your last meeting, the 18th, was it?
Was it the 18th?
Should be in the minutes.
It should be in our package for the 18th.
But I watched, I, I did watch it and.
Okay, launch service, the discussion rolled around the launch service proposal.
You have that report in your last pack.
Last pack.
The report says the service would cover all operating costs starting the first year. projected recovery of the purchase cost will take seven or eight years. That's in the plan.
So do we need Item C in Article Six?
That, to your point, that's what you're saying.
You, you still have to appropriate the money, even if it's 100% from fees.
Ah, right, okay.
Okay, I get it, right?
Fine.
Even if you don't use it?
Even if you don't use it?
Yeah.
Just to, for, I'm sorry, Greg, did you want to answer that?
Answer. Yeah, even if you don't, even if you're not going to use it, but if you anticipate using it, then you need to appropriate.
All right.
Okay, so this is not like the Parks Revolving Fund where.
No, this is not set up that way, at least not yet.
Okay.
So I'm reading what's in, what was in our business plan was, if not enough customers are obtained to cover expected operational costs, the service will not run that season. Okay?
Okay.
And if the service experiences a 10% profit shortfall, a loss, over a three-year period, the service will be discontinued and the launch boats will be sold. So when we have budgeted such that we, you know, we're setting the fee to cover all the costs, right? Including, including the repayment of the boats. But what we said, as long as Bayon collects enough money, basically, to cover the salaries and, and everything else, we would start it this year and give him, you know, the three years to find the right price point and number of customers. That's what, that's the language I was looking for. I'm distinguishing.
Are there any other questions on Article Six? Other than we should decide who is going to speak to it and, and be sure that at the meeting, we're clear about what, what the details of the rules are.
Motion to approve Article Six as written.
I think we still may want to have a sentence, further sentence saying that this
Self-supporting.
Self-sustaining enterprise. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So Greg, will you be amending that?
So the launch service is to be fully funded by user fees, is?
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
The statutory statement?
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve Article Six as amended.
Second.
Discussion, John?
Yes.
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 Okay. That one was easy because it's in numbers that we can all understand. Here we go into the seven and a half million dollar range.
So yes, Article Seven is the bond vote?
Yes.
This would be subject to a ballot approval as well. So again, seeking that 7.7, I'm sorry, 7.55 million dollars. 4.1 for capital improvements to the water system. And 3.45 for payments to the, improvements to the wastewater system.
So Greg, you said this, this will also go on a ballot later on?
Correct, it'll be as part of the town election.
Okay.
And it's excluded past?
I'm, I'm sorry?
It's excluded, it will be on the ballot as excluded debt?
Correct, this is, this is proposed as a debt exclusion, which means it's outside of the, the limits of Prop 2.5. So it's, it's anticipated that it'll take a couple of years before the debt service fully hits the tax rate. Depending on how quickly the projects move forward. We could do some bond anticipation notes, which increases a little more interest payments, because you're paying interest but no principal. But it's a way to, to make sure we needed all the money before bonding for the full amount. And typically, there's a year delay. When you borrow the money, the first payment is, is a year later. So we would anticipate this hitting the tax rate in, in '27, fiscal '27. And if it was the full 7.5, we could add another two and a half percentage points to the tax rate.
Each percentage point is worth how much? For the average homeowner?
Each percentage point?
Yes. Did you say $300 or?
No, 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 each percentage point is, is not even 100. Typical, typical two and a half percent increase is around, it's around the two, for easy numbers, it's around $250.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions on Article Seven? Motion?
Motion to approve Article Seven.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And says yes?
John says yes.
Article Eight. Is.
So this is the, the funding for the library matching grant. So this is taking approval, redirecting 150,000 of the 200,000 that was previously appropriated as, as a match toward what was hoped to be a grant from the state to pay for a study to look at options for renovations and/or expansion of the library.
I have concerns about this from the standpoint that when the monies were first approved, weren't they approved for the restroom renovation? And I think to now, I, 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 I think that.
Yeah, what, where do, where do the restroom renovations stand? They decided they don't need them anymore? I, I forgot where this one stood.
They.
Well, they're still, they're still high need. They, they could not find a suitable place in their minds that, that didn't compromise programming in, in other spaces too, too, too highly. So they were not able to find what they felt was a suitable place that would not have too big of an impact on, on library operations. And that they really feel like they need to look at this whole picture renovation, expansion idea to find appropriate space for the needed restrooms.
I just find it a little disconcerting that, that it's being, it was approved for one thing, and now we're, we're, we're trying to morph it into a, a different application. And I'm not, I don't know if I, I don't feel comfortable with that.
It is a reappropriation.
I, I understand that, but I just.
Straightforward, so 150 is going here, and the other 50 is going to these other two projects on Article Five.
Musical funds, yes.
So here's a thought. Because this came up at FinCom meetings previously, is that if appropriated money sits unused for like two or three years or whatever, it, it should go away, right? If you haven't used it, right? It should go away. So maybe the way we could handle this is, is there a way to eliminate, you know, cancel the prior appropriation of 200,000? Because they're not going to do the bathrooms, so make the money go away and then have that be one article, and then have a separate article requesting the 150, rather than blending it together.
I mean, you can do that, but that'll be the effect. If you say no to this article, then that one, that 200 will, will.
That's the point.
I, I.
That's the point.
In Article Eight, 150 of that will flow back into the fund balance. The, the net result is the same, but, but you could do it in those two different steps. I mean, the, it's not.
Well, no, so the net result is not the same. The net result is only the same if both of those articles I proposed get approved. If Article Eight does, does not get approved, they get to keep the 200, I guess.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, the, the 150 will, will flow, because it's, it's a timing issue, so we were allowing it to, free cash wasn't certified, I'm sorry, let me back up. Free cash is certified as of July 1 of every year, June 30 of every year by the state. And so as of last June 30, that 200,000 remained on the books. It was still reserved for the restroom project. And so the only way to get at it now, rather than wait until it flows into the fund balance, is to reappropriate. But if we don't do anything, it will flow into the fund balance, and then you can appropriate out of the fund now.
But I, I guess what Becky's point was, and, and what I'm kind of agreeing with is, it feels to me like these are two separate issues. Do we fix the bathrooms now? Okay? And separately, do we support design for a renovation? They're two different things.
Right, and I, I think it's completely, it's much clearer if we do it in the two steps.
I mean, I may not have suggested the proper two steps, but how long has it been since the, the items were originally appropriated, three years ago? Two years ago? I mean, there's been no movement on those bathrooms, so the money should.
They, they, the trustees do not want to go forward with the renovation of the bathrooms.
Okay, then we should take the money away and, and have a separate article that says, talks about what they do want to do, and they can stand on their own.
That's how I feel. I just think it's much.
Can we divide this article into two separate votes? Because there have been
Oh, okay.
Other, Alan, please.
Yeah, that's an O, yeah.
And Sarah has her hand up after Alan.
Alan? You have a war.
Just from the standpoint of, of meaning efficiency and effectiveness, it seems to me that doing it in a single step, when that's the intent, makes more sense than dividing it into two.
Sarah?
Yeah, I, I think we looked at this quite a bit. And originally, we talked about having the 200,000 go back into free cash and then have new appropriations for the library. the 200,000 go back into free cash and then have new appropriations for the library, but we lose a year in the expense so that we're taxing people for money that's going to free cash because we're using all of the reserves up to the 8%, and we don't want to go any deeper. If the 150,000 is not passed, then that will, will remain the original capital appropriation, and then next year, we can move it to free cash.
So I guess, I guess that makes sense, but it feels like we still have $50,000 left in, yeah, I don't want to say play money, that's not the right phrase, but shouldn't, whatever we do in this article equal $200,000? Why, why would we leave them with $50,000 in a bathroom budget that we know they're not going to use?
So it's slated, it's slated to be reappropriated in Article 5.
Yeah.
Oh, in Article 5.
It's already there in Article 5.
It's already in Article 5.
For other...
And actually, this would be your 21.
Items 9 and 10 in Article 5 is leaving that remaining 50,000.
So we're already re-appropriated, we've already re-appropriated 50 of this?
No.
If it passes?
If it passes, but let's just say it's already, it was an article that we said okay to...
This article.
Right, right.
20 minutes ago.
Yeah, I mean, it's, Brian and I are talking over here that we've already approved something. We've already taken away, if we approve Article, you know, the budget, Article 5, excuse me, then we've already taken away 50. If Article 8 does not go forward, we're leaving them with $150,000 that they don't want to use, and I guess we're waiting, we'd have to wait another year to move to free cash. I just...
I think this needs to, if it's going to go forward as one article, I think it needs to be rewritten because this was approved three years ago for fiscal year '22, and I just, I, I don't think it's...
Alan?
I think it needs to be rewritten, if I'm going to approve it.
Alan, is, is, do you have any thoughts on the fact that we are using part of the 200,000 from the appropriation that we're revoking in Article 5? And then in Article 8, we're doing the actual saying that we're taking the money out of the bathroom appropriation?
So the motion for Article 5 will list that same language about re-appropriating of the 200...
It's just the...
Would it not make sense?
You don't see that in the article, but the motion will specify.
Okay.
Can we, if we were to write Article 8 for Article 5, I think then it becomes a law, then it becomes clear. If that makes sense.
Uh huh. And I think it needs to be restated in a way that is just...
That, that's a little awkward right now unless we have the restatement because it's too late for us to post for another meeting before the warrant has to close.
Sarah has her hand up again.
Yes, still.
It was my understanding that the reason why we needed this separate article was because we have to accept the grant and therefore it couldn't be contained within the capital segment and therefore it had to be separate just because we have to accept the grant. Is that right, Fred?
Well, apply for. It doesn't say, it says to apply for, accept, and so not just accept, I mean, it still has to be applied for.
Right, allow them to, to apply for the grant, so.
If people agree with, that's where I'm just, I mean, this is, this is, in my opinion, putting the cart before the horse, before it's really been explained what it is the library is wanting to do, or, I mean, they, they want to get a, a grant and monies to look into expansion. And I think, I mean, has it even been explored if there's a, an appetite throughout town to, to do that?
I think that's what this vote is all about.
I, I...
Yeah, so what happens if this vote gets turned down? What happens to the other 50,000 that is appropriated based on this?
They already have it.
That still goes through.
They have, they have the 200,000. The 50 is already there, we're just taking that out of the 200 and using it.
Okay, but, um, this is, this article is where we specifically say that we are taking the 200,000.
It's just saying 150 of the 200. So it's simply 150, it's not touching the other 50.
Okay.
It's just saying, let's take this...
So we, we explain in our, then we'd have to explain in Article 5 that there is $200,000 that the library doesn't want to use.
Right.
And that's where that's coming from.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it does say reappropriate.
Right.
We're in fact doing the same with, in both situations, it's just that the second one is broken out because we have to apply for and accept a matching fund. That's the only reason it's there, otherwise it would have been number 11 under library.
Right, and this 50, it's still taking restroom renovation funds to walkway repair.
And re-appropriating for that, and just like it's taking the 150 and putting it towards this...
Yeah, but that's a whole, I think, different type of application than really modifying expansion use.
So if Article 8 is turned down, it has no impact on anything in Article 5?
No.
No, I think it does.
Because that 50,000 is separate.
It's already been appropriated, and it says reappropriate.
Okay.
But the, but the motion for Article 5 will include that detail, it'll say, and to reappropriate 50,000 of the 200,000 that was previously...
Right.
Appropriated for the library restrooms.
So if this Article 8 gets approved as, as is currently worded, then they get their money to pursue the renovations?
250,000.
If it does not get approved, then we have to wait a year to take it away?
That's a problem for the Library Commission because these requests for proposal come up like every five years, and the deadline for this is this summer.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying if the voters do not approve this...
Then...
Then how do we take the...
The 150 would flow into the fund balance, and it would certify this coming summer, and it would be available to expand in FY '26.
Available to spend by the library?
By anything.
By any, by, by town.
Have to be re-appropriated, it has to be appropriated.
Okay.
Yeah, because they haven't used it, will not have not used it in four years.
But I didn't understand that, I thought there was no expiration, that we had to enforce that and move it, and I just wanted to understand the mechanism.
The other thing is, is that this appropriation, I know, isn't a foregone conclusion, they have to apply, and if they get turned down, the money goes nowhere.
Right.
Right.
And then returned back to the...
Yes, then it would go into the, well, actually, I guess it would get turned down after July 1, and you have to certify that by July 1?
Yeah.
And, and you don't know if that money's going to be available or not by July 1?
I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
So, I understand the concerns, I think that all of these details need to be part of the debate and the discussion that will surround Article 8.
So, so tonight, we are approving the language in the warrant, but not, if we recommend approval, or are we...
If we agree with it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I...
So we do need to know whether or not you want to recommend or make your recommendation at the time.
Okay, because we haven't done that on the others, and on this one, there's a little bit of, there may be some disagreement, so I'm just clarifying. To date, I think we have just approved the warrant, we did not specifically say whether or not we recommend those other articles.
There have been times that we've not, and it's just, it doesn't have to be unanimous to be perp...
Perpetition.
Right, understand.
We, we can even...
Just takes majority.
We can, we can take a position on it.
Yeah.
We should probably go back and clean up and, and, and agree that we want...
The other articles.
For the other, so could I have a motion to recommend Articles 1 through 7?
So I'll move second.
Third.
Yeah. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann says yes?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we will agree to put Article 8, do we have a motion to put Article 8 on the warrant with our recommendation to be made on town meeting floor?
I'll move that.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Further discussion? Becky?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we get to debate this one again some other time.
Yeah, I always, I always forget what we're talking about.
Okay. And Article 9 is the Masons. Discussion?
Nope, not pending.
Motion?
I make a motion to accept Article 9 as written.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Ann says yes?
John says yes. I would like to make one comment. The seniors would like to make this as soon as they can on the agenda here, it's Article 9, but I guess they want to get to bed. So they're just saying if it can be moved up at all, although I don't see practically...
It's before the school discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So you could, you could put it right after Article 5's? Could be Article 6 and just move everything down one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, do we need a motion to...
Recommend?
Recommend that Article 9 become Article 6? And then we move each one up from there? So Article 9 becomes Article 6, Article 6 becomes 7, 7 becomes 8, and 8 becomes 9.
Was, was there any, Greg, was there any method to the order in which you put these articles together, or is what Becky say fine?
It's fine, I mean, I, I was trying to group the capital projects together, and one of those come in is not particularly material.
Okay, so the parents get to stay up late and the seniors get to go. Nice.
It sounds about right.
Okay. Have we specifically recommended Article 9?
Was there a motion?
Yes.
Did we, did we finish that?
Well, I made the motion to change the numbering, but nobody made a second.
Nobody seconded, I'll second it.
Okay. So, this is...
Do we need to vote on it?
Numbering, I don't know, do we need to...
Yeah, that's...
Vote on this to, to change the numbering and move the articles around, Greg? You don't need to do that?
No, that'll just be part of the whole warrant package and...
Okay, great, never mind.
Okay, so, do we want to go in the town report as supporting this, I guess? Okay.
I make a motion, let forward, recommend, I, just go, go for it, recommend this article.
Second.
Article, whatever you want to call it.
Six.
Six.
You mean Article 6.
Second.
Okay. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Article 10.
So this is a bit of a housekeeping item, so we have received some opioid supplement monies, and those funds went into, basically flowed into the fund balance because the state hadn't given us permission to create special accounts, now we can do a special account, and so we, we want to create the special account and, and transfer from fund balance that 8,000 plus almost 9,000 into this new account.
Is there a motion to do so?
Some of... And to recommend as well?
And to recommend approval. Okay, Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann says yes?
John says yes.
Article 11.
That's the general school budget, both operating and capital.
Discussion?
I move to approve Article, move to approve and recommend Article 2nd.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann says yes?
John, yes.
Okay.
So Article 4 is the funding for the feasibility study for potential new elementary school in Essex. Our share is estimated to be 660,000, that's not a hard and fast number, but it should be sufficient.
It's a huge amount of money. It's a million and a half dollar feasibility study. Yeah.
How is this split, Greg?
Oh, it's, one third goes to the district of the, of the 1.5 million.
Okay.
The remaining million is divided according to the capital proportionment formula, I think it's the capital proportionment formula, but in the regional agreement.
Which is roughly two thirds, one third.
Yep.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve and recommend Article 12.
Second.
So just so you know, this is being proposed as a capital exclusion, a one-time capital exclusion, to, to raise those funds outside of the limits of 2.5. Therefore, it also requires a ballot vote, and as I said, it's a one-time, so it would, it would go away after, after the one year. So this would basically raise the taxes just under 2.2%. And your operating budget was coming in at 3%.
So, and that's the end of the tax, Articles on taxation? Is that the end of it? So the net increase in, for the tax bill to be...
4.1?
Nope.
Is it?
Yeah, 4.2 rounded, yes.
Discussion? Motion? Well, I'll move to approve and recommend Article 12.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. And the next is also a school article, and the, what's the, this is the final part. Is it Highland or is it Brook?
This is Highland.
I know it says Highland, I...
No, but isn't it, it's the one across the, the school?
At the school.
I mean, the high school, right?
Highland's on the ground. It's at the school.
Okay.
I thought it was Highland, yeah.
So Highland, Highland was done first, and then Brook was done.
Right, yeah.
So the, the school fronted all the money?
Yeah. For both?
For both projects? And basically, you know, the contribution back from the towns are replenishing their reserves.
Okay. Is this actual...
If you want to just say to cost refurbish the turf fields, that's fine, you don't have to spend...
Why don't we just make it the turf field so we don't have to... We have already paid... We have already paid.
I think we need to be specific.
We already paid for half of Brook Street. And we haven't paid for anything else?
We, we already paid an additional 400,000 towards the projects combined. So we, we have, we have paid 800,000 dollars. We originally thought we were over 1.2 because we thought the total price was going to be 1.6 in total. The total price came in a little better, so our, our total cost is, is 1.048.
I think I would be happier if it were the turf fields because.
Open a question?
Because of what Greg just explained, that the school paid for all of it. And we paid for town's half of Brook Street and we paid another 400 for uncertainty. And now we're finishing up the turf field projects.
Do you want, should the article say that, I mean, are we in a sense repaying the school district?
Yeah, the agreement was that the school district would front the money so that they could get the work done in finite time.
Right, and my, my question is, do we want to be that specific in the wording in the article? Because we really don't have a choice here.
And it's not a funding, it's a refunding.
It's, it's repaying the school district, however we want to phrase that.
Well, the town's final share of the cost.
But I, I think Kathy's point is a good one. Some might think, well, I don't really want to pay for that, so no, and, yeah.
Okay. Language?
I was just suggesting for the purpose of.
Repaying?
Repaying.
The town's final share.
Manchester Essex Regional School District for the town's final share of the cost.
That's fine. That's what's happening.
To refurbish the turf fields, plural, right? Just the turf fields. Second.
All right, so it's just terps, not Highland, just say terps.
Just turf fields.
Because they fronted all of the money anyway for both fields, so it really, it's fungible, could be for anything, either field.
Greg, Debbie, do you have that language?
I will, I hear it.
Okay. Okay, this is to see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer from available funds for to reimburse the school district.
How about for the purpose of repaying the town's final share of the cost to the school district to refurbish the turf fields, comma, or take any, or take any other action related thereto? Is that?
Purpose?
I hope, I hope.
Again, suggest that these are the kind of details that get discussed when you make the motion and explain the article.
Okay. No, 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 I, I, I think that the clearer we make the article, the better. I mean, we're not funding, we're repaying.
Make that statement on.
Which is a distinction that most people are really careful to be quite honest.
You have too many words, you have to confuse people.
But I think I would like to say that we're refurbishing, the cost of refurbishing the town, the, the.
Turf fields.
And we can explain the whole history.
Okay. Motion to approve and recommend article thirteen with the amendment of removing at Highland Field and inserting Fields. Second.
Okay. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy? Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Okay, article fourteen is the community preservation, community's recommendations. There.
I'll move to approve and recommend article fourteen as printed. Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Article fifteen is the easement of, for access and parking at the housing authority and with the, with the details to be filled in. Questions? I assume that someone else has those numbers and.
Yeah, we'll get those filled in tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Uh, just a question on this, Greg. Has, has any discussion in DPW been had with regard to when this project's going to be done or what the cost is?
But, yeah, so that's part of the CPC project. You see it listed as a 20,000.
Oh, is it up there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're all set.
So, so that, yeah, those are the dollars to cover it.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept and recommend article fifteen.
Second. Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay, this is. The next article is $100,000 for FY '24 legal expenses.
So this is when we started the meeting a while ago, when we talked about legal expenses.
Feels like about three days ago.
Right. I move to approve and recommend article sixteen as presented.
Second.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Article seventeen is the OPAP payment, which we make every year.
Motion to approve and recommend article seventeen?
Second.
Yes.
Becky says yes? Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Article eighteen. This is the.
So this is the annual parking rep revolving fund, but we have now added the board of health revolving fund as well. So you see the two different programs and we set the maximum dollar amount in and out for those two funds.
Questions, discussion?
Yes, so Greg, for these, these numbers here, so, so this is kind of the cash going in and out, but is the cash, the delta at, at the end of the day or the end of the year, is it expected to kind of break even or what's the story?
At, at a minimum break even, there's, there's some, there's oftentimes a little leftover because some of the, the collections may exceed the actual expense for a particular program.
You're right. Okay. But they're expected more or less to break, to be even. This isn't necessarily, it's a cash outlay, but it's just a, it's just working capital, so to speak.
Yes, correct.
And it's okay to have the, have it be left at a limit without giving a specific amount of what the spending will be?
Correct. So the, the whole concept of the revolving fund is you collect monies for certain programs, those monies go to pay for that program. And it, you know, it varies how many programs you're doing in a given year. It, it varies how many participants you have, you know, for a particular program. Whether it be the after-school program, whether it be, you know, special trips, whether it be summer program, and, and field trips, et cetera. And then on the board of health side, it's, not that we want it to happen again, but if we have to set up vaccination dispensing sites, we, we would have the ability to collect the monies and then have those monies go right up to pay for that without having to worry about having had appropriated those dollars ahead of time.
Motion to approve and recommend article eighteen?
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay. Um, article nineteen eliminates, um, backup product lines and, um, goes back to rely on, um, other bylaws in the state sessions and making regulations.
Didn't we just approve these in the last meeting? I thought, isn't that what the board of health brought forward in the last meeting?
So there's two sets of regulations, one are part of our general bylaws. And, and then another is a set of, of court of health regulations which are separate.
Okay.
So this is, this is dealing with the general bylaw.
Motion to approve and recommend article nineteen?
Second. Kathy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
One of these people thinks, Brian?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay.
There.
I won't pay attention. Okay. All right, twenty is the stormwater, uh, management. Greg, what do you recommend?
So, um, with, with respect to, with all due respect to Chuck, I think we need to hold off on this one. Um, I think there's more material here than, than, than we have really publicized. I'm just a little fearful that we haven't laid the groundwork and gotten the word out enough on this one. So what, what has happened here is the, the state DEP came up with some, some recommended stormwater management bylaw language. We adopted that a couple of years ago, was it? Maybe not even. And then EEP reviewed what the state had done and said, wait a minute, folks, you, you missed some things. So they've added a lot of definitions, which, if that's all they were doing, then it probably wouldn't be, they're probably fine to go ahead. But they've also, you know, changed some procedures, changed some inspection procedures and, and language. Again, it's all being recommended. It is a bit of a boilerplate, but I, I am a little concerned about the volume of changes here.
And, and there are.
Like the time we have to get that information out to, to the voters.
There are a couple of problems with the text. There are two definitions which are different for, um, impervious surface. There, there are some numbering which is.
Yeah, I, I agree. This, this one, I had a really hard time getting through the changes. I honestly, and, and this doesn't meet my test of making it easy for people to do the right thing. So I personally need a lot more help with this one.
Can I ask to hear from Chuck?
Sure.
Chuck, would you mind weighing in on what we were saying?
Yeah, I, I do recognize that, you know, this is kind of a last minute and wasn't my intention. We were contacted by EPA, what, a month or two ago, Greg, not even. So this is kind of par for the course for them. This is part of our MS four permit, which is basically our ability to operate our drainage, just like we operate a wastewater plant, a water plant, you know, this is that permit. Um, and so these changes will be required, they are required. This, you know, not being able to do them will mean we're out of compliance technically, but I don't, you know, think that I'm going to go to jail over it, so I think you guys are safe. And then I would say from there, you know, we could do some more outreach and, you know, get some more, you know, stuff online and whatnot, but, you know, so these are coming directly from EPA, like Greg said, and I would anticipate that there are a lot of other municipalities that have the same issues. Um, and they weren't really looking at the calendar with respect to town meeting when they, you know, reached out about this stuff, so. Um, you know, that's, that's generally where I, I will say, these are incorporating some new LID, the light infrastructure design with regards to stormwater management. That's like kind of a new thing for MS four. So there are kind of, like, they were just trying to get everything. Um, so that's, that's all. Um, but, yeah, well, we could try again in the fall or whenever.
Do you, do, do we have a timeframe within which we have to comply or buy then?
Yeah, so technically the bylaw needed to be adopted, like Greg said, a few years ago. That was like a requirement of our MS four permit. And so, you know, that, that's what we tried to do. The, them under, realizing that it was out of compliance, uh, you know, came up now, and so technically by not adopting it, you know, say as soon as possible, we will technically still be out of compliance because we're not, you know, mentioning the things that they're looking for, but again, so it, right now, basically, uh, is the, is the timeframe, but I don't think there's really a material difference between now and six months from now.
And this won't impact funding or FEMA or anything else like that?
No, this is, this is more, you know, I, I think we, when we do an annual report to, for MS four every year, and as part of that report, you know, there, there is a, you know, checkbox, like, have you adopted the bylaw? This year in that report, it will say, we adopted the bylaw, we need to make, you know, the, the changes, you know, per year, whatever email. And so like, you know, they'll, they'll see that we're in, you know, in work, in progress. So I, I don't foresee it being an issue with.
You can just say we're, we're, you know, it's in process to be presented at all town meeting.
Yep, which is essentially what we did, honestly, the first couple of years, that it was required, you know, to be adopted in general. Because it, it was like right along COVID, so it was like, you know, we're trying to have a short town meeting, so we didn't do it because of COVID, yada, 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 so. It's not that much different.
Motion to remove.
Is that just article twenty? Is it article nineteen?
In article twenty.
Twenty? Are we doing?
It's twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty, just twenty.
Sorry. I second that.
Okay, so the vote is to not to put article twenty on the warrant?
Right.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay, twenty, twenty-one, which would then become twenty.
So I would, I would recommend the same motion, that you do not need to move forward with this.
Okay.
That, um, in consulting the town council, the second time around, he feels that it's not necessary, that there is sufficient language in the bylaw to allow for those second driveway entrances, if, if the planning board were to approve them. There's some other, other issues with that process, but in terms of the bylaw allowing, allowing it, it's, it's not essential to do.
I move that we not recommend putting article, the article about the driveway curb cuts on the warrant.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian? Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Article. Twenty-two, which is a citizen petition, we, um, don't have an option not to put this on the warrant. I suggest that we make our recommendation on town meeting floor. And so I move that we place article twenty-two as a citizen petition. Now twenty, thank you. And make our recommendation on town meeting floor.
Second.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and the last one, housekeeping.
I move to approve and recommend article twenty-three as presented.
Second.
Oh, now article twenty-one.
Yes.
Twenty-one?
Maybe twenty.
Twenty?
No.
No, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay, yeah, you're right, you're right, okay, yeah. Okay. Becky?
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Okay.
Now who does what?
Now, is there anything else we need to do on the warrant?
Tonight.
Tonight.
Tonight. Do we need to decide who's doing what tonight?
I think we can do that at the meeting on the sixteenth.
Yeah, yes.
Greg, have you frozen or are you?
I think he's frozen.
Yes.
Okay.
Up.
Oh, thank you, we'll be back.
Okay.
We can ask Alan.
Alan, do you think we're, have we done what we need to for your purposes?
Yes, for tonight. Obviously, we do need movers, secunders, and speakers eventually, but I don't think we need them tonight.
Okay. I believe we have finalized the budget, approved the warrant, and discussed the articles.
Yes.
The way finding.
Should I ask if, because we have someone waiting in terms of consent agenda, that we move consent agenda ahead of wayfinding? Since I am the only one here to talk on that.
Certainly. Okay, the, we're moving to.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If we're done with the warrant and town meeting, I think I will sign off.
But there are so many fascinating things yet to come.
Yes, but that's, that's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Alan. I appreciate your time.
My pleasure. Thank you, and I'll see you on, on the sixteenth.
Yes.
Good night, Alan. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thanks. So I'm sorry, I had a glitch in my connection.
We proceeded without you. Everything's fine.
Yeah, we covered everything.
Redundrum will slow down.
We moved consent agenda up, just so that we can let.
So I just, I just didn't know where you stood with the pickleball issue.
Oh.
With what? Oh, we haven't gotten there. Where is that?
Right, that has, that has barrier on the warrant.
Okay, sorry.
Where is that?
What, um.
There's some comment. Yeah, where does that stand, I guess?
I guess I don't see.
I saw that.
What does it have to do with the warrant? I'm sorry.
It's in, it's in your memo, but it's not on, it's not on our agenda.
Well, it's, it's part of the warrant discussion, but.
Okay, where?
So the question of whether or not to.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
The question of funding. So when you last talked about the pickleball sound barrier, the, the green light was given to use the revolving fund. And the state has since opined that to use the revolving fund for that purpose would require a vote at town meeting. So if we want to pursue continuing using the revolving fund, we would need to add an article to the warrant to see if voters would approve using funds from revolving fund to pay for the sound barriers. The, the alternative is to use funds out of our maintenance account, parking fields maintenance accounts, to pay for those other current dollars. But there was some hesitancy at your last discussion to use tax dollars to do that.
On the other hand, at this point.
It's a, it's.
It's hard. We, if we put it as a vote on the, on the, at the town meeting, I, that, that will delay it even further. And my, Becky seems to be nodding, Kathy's nodding.
Yeah.
I think whatever, whatever gets us to there fastest is probably best.
Right.
So.
Are these monies in the maintenance account?
Correct.
It's about fifteen or twenty thousand?
No, it's.
Yeah, yeah, in that fifteen thousand range, yes.
So I guess the question would be, if we agree to use the money in the maintenance account, is there something else that won't happen?
Probably.
I don't have a, so a lot of times there are, are sort of surprise repairs that are needed, and a field gets torn up during the winter for some reason or another.
So that's, that's really what I'm getting at, because it's been a really rainy winter. I just want to make sure if we use these funds for the pickleball, pickleball sound barriers, we're not in any way preventing the fields from being in good shape for, for what they're needed this, this season.
Yeah, yeah. So I can certainly double check on that, to make sure that that's the case.
Sue.
I, I don't think we want to put her on the town warrant.
No.
Getting at, right?
I agree. I just, like I said, my only concern is not making sure the fields are in shape for, well, it's all, I mean.
The field on Pine Street is new.
I guess, I'm only concerned about the potential damage for the, you know, it had really, on a snowy winter, but a really rainy one.
Question, Greg. I, I assume you've discussed this with Cheryl in terms of this approach. She's the one that has that budget.
Well, it's actually under CPW, but.
Oh, it is.
They, they work hand, they work hand in hand on, on figuring out what's needed.
All right. They, 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 they know of this approach?
Yes, it's been, yeah, we've talked about it.
Okay.
So, yeah, they were, they were comfortable proceeding with this.
Yes, and, and this is really, I mean, this is fiscal twenty-four. This money's coming out of fiscal twenty-four.
Correct, it's current, current dollars.
Current, current dollars, and we've got three months left.
Yeah, and it's.
Yeah.
And it's, it is a public park.
It is.
I move that we use money.
Maintenance.
From the maintenance budget to fund sound barriers at the pickleball courts on Summer Street.
Second.
Discussion? Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yes.
Okay. Does that resolve that to your satisfaction, Greg?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Sorry, we got ahead of ourselves.
I love that. Fix out.
It doesn't affect that.
Final letter, huh?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Now, we move the food truck at the local election for May twenty-first from the consent agenda to our next article.
Can I move both?
Just discussion.
Can we, can we do both, all the consent agenda? Oh, I see. Yep, nevermind.
Yeah, there's no problem doing both, but if we're going to discuss one of them, it's not consent.
Correct.
And I think we need to discuss this a little bit.
Yep.
Because last time, the location of the truck was clearly outside of the polling area. And this time, it's been requested that it be moved to within a hundred and fifty feet of, of polls.
No, I think it was just outside one fifty, but on the school grounds.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah.
It's outside the one fifty, but on the school grounds.
Okay. I. Where exactly is it proposed?
It's, do you see the, at the very bottom, the map that was, that was, and it's circled in red chappy?
Yeah, this is an old drone shot when the construction was done.
Yeah.
But it's, wait, my assumption is, I'm just kind of going by what the tennis courts as the landmark. There's Lincoln Street.
Yep.
Way over here. Now, my, my question to you is, the, I think that the main entrance to the school is over here or over here. Where is the actual polling entrance going to be?
The polling entrance will be at the gymnasium, which is quite close to there.
Yes, so it's in the same, the same place it was for the primary.
Yes.
Beautiful.
So, and, and I, I.
I walked it off.
But I did go walk things off before I came here.
Therese Malden.
What's her address?
Twenty-two Mass Canoal Street.
I, I think that, you know, Diane had some concerns about it being that close. And it also does, would take up some more parking.
And that's very convenient parking.
It's very, yes, and I, I think that.
Perhaps there is a parking area in front of the main entrance to the school, which would be further from, would be off the street, but further from the entrance to polling area.
Or use the same spot.
The same spot is so far away that, I mean, I, I, yeah, I think it was successful, but, and even though in May, it's not going to be dark at six o'clock. It probably won't be dark till eight, three thirty, right?
It probably won't be sleeting either.
Well, that's just it. It was, it was pretty inclement then. We don't know. But the grilled cheeses were amazing.
They were delicious.
Yeah.
So. My, my desire would be for it to at least be visible from that, that entrance. And that, the entrance, I believe, is way over here. This was, I mean, I didn't ask for that.
Could you flip the map up? Just if you flip the map upside down and what you're holding it, then that gives it. Yeah. Accurate, yeah, that's.
So I think that the polling, that the entrance that we used at the primary was over here.
Yep.
Mm-huh.
And this lot, now remember, it's a town election, and yes, the whole purpose is to encourage people to come and vote. But a lot of those spots were empty. Again, it was probably because of the weather. I don't know what the turnout was.
And primaries, I think that was a.
There's, there's another area of.
Circle, right?
So, well, there's a certain, there's, there's the area in front of the school, which is shown here on the, on the more, two-thirds of the way to the left, as kind of a enclosed area. The other place that might be, that might work, that's probably too close, sorry.
You got to remember, that was a primary. People show up, they vote, they're gone.
Exactly.
They're here for two, three hours.
No, 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 this is, this is town meeting, election in May.
Oh, just the election. Oh, this is not the meeting. Okay, this is just the election. Okay.
And from what I understand from Diane is that turnout for, for town elections, it's just town business, is very small. So I can't imagine that, if these spots in fact are a hundred and fifty feet from the entrance, from the door, the, the door, actual door of the facility, right? It doesn't mean a hundred and fifty feet wa, can, can, including the walk into the gymnasium, correct? Okay. So if that's the case, I mean, it would probably, the truck would just sit down at this end of it.
At the far end?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm looking at that. Do you think that's actually more visible, though?
Well, if everybody's coming and going here.
Yeah.
And it's here, yeah, I mean, the only other, the place I thought would perhaps been a good spot was over here.
I think it'd be, I, I actually think that's not as good as where you were last time.
It was far away.
It was far away, but everybody was going by it.
Across the street to get there then, too, which is going to, you know.
Um, Diane.
On the ground, on the ground.
Diane is on the meeting and she has her hand raised?
Okay, good.
Yes, Diane.
Hey, Diane.
Hi, everybody. That parking lot is within the hundred and fifty foot rule. But even that last parking spot, right across the way from the entrance to the gym.
Yep.
Where we use is within the hundred and fifty foot rule. So it would need to be away from there. The only way into the school to park is coming from Lincoln Street. Is that correct? So I think that that might be the best spot. But I don't know, but I just wanted to mention that about the parking lot.
Well, if it's within that one hundred and fifty feet, I mean, that just negates that already.
Right, that's fine.
Is, is the parking lot in front of the entrance to the school within a hundred and fifty feet?
Um, I'd have to check with the police chief and check his, his Google map. But it should be a hundred and fifty feet from the polling place in a circle. So just from that door in a circle. And that's where we allow people to hold signs. And I've never seen anyone allowed to hold signs in front of the school building either. They're usually down by the street.
Because it's convenient.
Yeah. Well, the street is way beyond a hundred and fifty feet. So even if, say, this, the end of this circle that, this was sent to me, I didn't put the circle on there. But that's within a hundred and fifty feet.
Right.
Then, then, then all of this is within a hundred and fifty feet, right? So the people that are down at the end, they're just told they have to be there. They're, they're beyond a hundred and fifty feet, I think. So.
Okay. I.
Yeah.
Is this something that we can put off for two weeks?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Why don't we get?
Why don't we get an accurate.
Get a, get a circle.
An accurate description of where a hundred and fifty feet is.
Try and get you a location.
What seems to be the best location for it. If the best place is down in the street, it's down the street. We've got, we'll have some daylight still, and it'll be a little warmer. You know, hopefully, there won't be a monsoon. But, but do I have, I can go ahead and hire the truck? If you're prepared to have it on Lincoln Street, if that's where. If that's where it lands, that's where it lands, sure.
Well, can we approve the truck and finalize the location?
Yes.
That's what we're doing.
Motion to approve the food truck for town election in May.
May twenty.
May twenty-first.
Yeah.
Becky?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
And we can put Therese.
Todd has his hand up as well. I think he had some maps.
What happened?
Todd has his hand up. Sorry. Todd, please.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, I just sent you all the maps of the hundred and fifty feet in three different directions from the entrance to the polling tour.
Yeah, I heard.
I just sent them to you all right now.
Oh, I don't know. Well, so. Let's, let's put the location off until the sixteenth. Thank you for the maps. We'll use them, but.
Sixteen.
So we're not meeting on Monday, the fifteenth?
No, just, it's a holiday. It's Tuesday, it's Tuesday, Sunday.
Tuesday the sixteenth.
All right.
Patriots Day, Patriots Day. Yeah, okay.
So we can put it.
The sixteenth.
I, I would like to have, everybody have pictures and I, all I have is my cell phone and this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
So I'll see you on April sixteenth. Sixteenth, sixteenth.
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 The Tuesday.
The day of sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you, very welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Therese. All right. I just, I just do a motion to approve the minutes as March eighteenth, of March eighteenth, with the amendment sent to Debbie.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Becky? Okay. So I think we go back now to wayfinding subcommittee update.
Okay, weight finding subcommittee. We met on the twenty-sixth to have clarification of deliverables and the sequence of Q and A. So we are meeting next April second, Zoom, six to seven thirty. And we will be talking about logo and branding. And have invited Downtown Improvement Committee, Cheryl from Parks and Rec, and Tiffany Marletta for communications. The following meeting will be May seventh from six to seven thirty. And we have Mark Faverman, who is the consultant, who will present several options of branding and logo. And we have invited, again, Downtown Improvement, Tiffany and Cheryl. We will plan on posting an article to the Prickett, and it will go on in Greg's slot to be done mid-May to share the ideas proposing two options that will be put out for feedback, not necessarily to be given the final say, because that comes to the select board. But it will be asking for feedback. Next meeting is June fourth, six to seven thirty, and that's the mapping session to create the sign types in which locations, including Downtown Improvement Committee, DPW, Chief Fitzgerald, and Cheryl from Parks and Rec. And we will be meeting with the planning board June ten to present option, what we what we're planning to them. And then hopefully come before the select board for the final meeting, June seventeen, for the presentation of what has been determined. Get all that? Would you like me to send you a copy?
Two of them.
Okay. Here, I'll send it to you right now.
Oh, thank you.
There. Sent by hand mail. And everybody is invited to attend those meetings. They are public and are posted on the town website. So please come along. It's actually fascinating what what has been shown to us so far, the different types of branding and weight finding that other towns have done, and how you can get so much put sent across with a few signs by having them all be similar. Anyway, very fun. Sounds as if you're making rapid progress.
This is good.
Well, we have a, it's always good to have a deadline and know what your deliverables are, right, Kathy?
Absolutely.
Plus, Marlene Dolan is an amazing chair. She is just, she's all over it like butter on bread.
Excellent.
Yes.
Okay. The next article on the agenda is notary public services. And Graham, do you want to take this, or should we ask Diane?
Yeah, Diane's here, so she can certainly speak to it, but the the tee up is, as you saw from her numbers, a big increase in the request for her notary. I mean, significant increases. Area banks, I think, are are scaling back and driving more users to the town hall. Concern about liability has been raised. We have reached out to our insurance carrier to get coverage for it. And then I'll let Diane explain the process going forward and how to help limit some of it to keep it manageable and to keep our liability at a minimum as well. As she compared some notes with other communities. So Diane, if you want to take it from there, that'd be great.
Sure. Yeah, so I think notary public is a great service for the residents. We were having a lot of people come from all over to Manchester to notarize because we were notarizing. You'll see, I sent you the information. There's a lot of town halls that are doing it. We started after a training that I had, we did start not using staff as witnesses. We will use anybody who might be a notary in town hall as a witness if need be, but we try not to put any of the staff in that place because they don't have that coverage. And then Christina, my assistant, had mentioned that the liability was an issue when doing things that are very just more legalese, the real estate transfers and wills and powers of attorney didn't seem to be the appropriate place to do it right at the town hall window. So we set up a a little notary policies that I'm hoping that you guys will approve. We have a few names of of other places people can go for notaries. They come to town hall most of the time because it is it is a free service that we offer. But Staples, UPS, and there's actually a mobile notary locally that we can give up per number if people prefer want something. So I just wanted you to look at it, make sure you were okay with it, see if you had any questions on it. And that's that.
Question. Yes.
Diane, I I didn't see it in this, but did you want to limit it to townspeople?
I I think it says it's a service for the residents.
Says it right at the top.
Ah, there we go, solely for the residents. Hello.
You know, but there's a lot of people that come in, they work in town, or they're dropping their child off. I don't know. There there's a lot of people that come from all over to notarize in Manchester. I don't know if they go in, they go into the beach in the winter or what. I don't know.
So I have a question. So I'm not sure if it's Greg or yourself, Diane, but if there is always a reason when businesses stop offering a service, okay? So I just want to make sure we really understand what that reason is. Is it liability? Is it risk? Or is it driving inefficiencies because it's distracting to the staff that might be performing other core services? There's always a reason. So what is the reason why a bank or some other business is not wanting to do this service anymore?
So I think I can start to answer that. The banks aren't doing it because it's it takes away from their other service, I believe. It's it's a time con- it can be very time consuming. The notaries services that I would think would be easy to do in town hall, you know, affidavits, permission to travel, moving money from here to there. I mean, easy things like that. When people come in with a will or a power of attorney, there's pages of that, and then there's witnesses. And then you really, it's liable. I think the town now has a liability that covers us, but it's still sometimes uncomfortable doing things about wills and powers of attorney and bringing witnesses in. So why I wanted to limit it was primarily because some of that is a little bit uncomfortable at the window. And I don't feel fully equipped to be able to do some of that.
But yeah, so my question was more why the other businesses, like the banks, and it sounds like it's driving inefficiencies, it's distracting people from their core services, is what is what you said. So
I know, you know, it's funny, with the bank, I'm not sure. I just do know that they were sending everyone to us, and then literally, a few months ago, they came over with all their you had to keep a journal when you notarize, all these blank journals, and said, well, we're not notarizing anymore, and we send them to you. So here, you take these books.
So so what, so Greg, you said you were looking at some insurance to cover our liability here? Because it may not be covered satisfactorily already? Did I understand that right?
Yeah, it's it's an additional
Okay. General rule of thumb here, okay? You you don't do stuff for free.
Right.
Okay, so we either have to charge something to cover for the cost of the insurance and the labor. Because if we don't do that, then we are incentivizing other businesses, which may do notarization, to stop doing it because Manchester will take care of care of it. And then all of a sudden, we're going to get a request next year, oh, we need more staff in town hall. People are coming in for, you know, these notar- So as a general rule, when running services, you don't do stuff for free. Sometimes you might do that if you have people sitting around twiddling their thumbs and and you can offer a little side service to help keep people busy and keep your customers happy. That's fine. I just, it doesn't seem like that's what we're necessarily doing here. I I think the people at town hall here are busy. And I just want to make sure that any additional cost, because the volume has certainly gone up. You're 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 right. Any additional costs, especially for insurance, I'm wondering why we're not charging something.
I can sort of answer that. By state law, I don't think I can charge more than two dollars a signature. It might be even less than that.
Isn't someone charging two fifty? Yeah.
Maybe it's two fifty.
Beverly's two fifty, yeah.
Right. So, you know, then you then you're playing with change and whatnot.
So I guess my
I think it's important to to have a service, though. You know, it is a service for your residents for small things. I think that's what it was meant to be. It wasn't meant to do your your estate planning.
Understand. I I think, so I like that about it. But I'm concerned about the increase in volume. So what's not clear to me are are the guidelines that you've outlined here going to restrict the volume enough so that we don't get requests for additional personnel to handle, you know, more
This is a good good start. We're already cutting out a whole lot of
Absolutely.
Big time consuming.
That's right.
Give it a go and then
I just want to be clear. What is it that we would be doing and how many more than the three hundred? And how much does the extra insurance cost? You know, that question has not been answered yet, so.
So Diane, right now, you're taking all comers?
No, we started putting this up in December.
Okay, so in December. All right, so you've got three months. So three the three sixteen you got for two thousand twenty-three was all comers?
Yes.
You did wills and all of that other stuff, too?
Right.
Did you mean by all comers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so and you do you know what your running rate is? I mean, you've got three months of experience now. Things
I I didn't check before I came home, but we have, I have been turning people away. I have been turning people away.
All right, I'll be curious about that. Does does Cape Ann Savings offer a notary?
I don't know.
But that's still, they might only do it for their customers. I mean, I I think it's a nice service to have for townspeople. And I think that people would be happy to pay two dollars and fifty cents for a simple document that needs to be notarized.
I'm not sure that paying two dollars and fifty cents is cost effective. It's just
Right, I mean, you could
Dealing with
You'd have to collect the money and track.
That's a kind of
Yeah.
And I see what you're saying with fewer, just to be collecting two fifty.
I don't even have two fifty.
So could we, could we find out what the what the insurance, extra insurance would cost?
Because if they're going to say it's going to cost us, you know, an extra fifty bucks to our insurance, okay, fine. But if it's five thousand dollars, no, not interested.
So so I I'm interested in the insurance cost, and I'm also interested in how your running rate's going.
Right, yeah, those are the two questions that those are, that's the right way to phrase it, John.
Got it.
Can we bring this back for the sixteenth, or are we already jam packed on there? I don't think this would take long on the sixteenth.
If we have the information, like like the previous question, if we have the information, we'll make a quick decision.
Okay, could we get that information by the sixteenth?
Yes.
So we're looking for notary numbers? And insurance, added insurance cost? Or added annual insurance cost? Right. I think it looks good, though, Debbie. I mean, Diane. I'm looking at Debbie saying you.
Good, I'm glad somebody else makes that type of mistake.
Oh, no, never.
Okay. I think we've done that. The next item is review and approve the parking guidelines, and we have those, and
So I did notice a a change that we had requested last time that did not get into this copy. Greg, it had to do with the visitor parking placard. For the visitor parking, it's not required that households have, without off-street parking, so that without off-street parking, phrase should not be in there. It's it's households on a resident-only parking street, households residing on resident-only I don't know how you want to phrase it, but oh, too tired. Houses households on resident-only parking street sections.
Resident-only parking.
Or street sections, right, because some streets, it's just that section. Those are the ones that are allowed to have visitor passes. It's perfectly fine if they have off-street parking, but they may not have enough for guests. That's kind of the purpose of them.
And then yeah, I had another, which was on the boater placard. It says, and I didn't recall that we did one, I mean, one placard per mooring, per owner, but what if there are four owners on a boat? I mean, you could have four cars coming at one time. Is that and that's that's okay? Or do you have, I mean, somebody could just put however many owners on the but for Bion's purposes, there's only one owner listed for a mooring.
That's a good point.
So how do we, I I think that it should just be one placard per mooring.
By Bion's purposes? I don't know.
Bion, it's it's, I I I'm
I mean, I I had a joint ownership for quite a while. And he had a copy of the title. He wants to see both names on that, and that's what drove it, but
So if I recall this discussion, this is a courtesy that we offer, and a lot of other towns don't. And the my feeling was that we left the discussion, it's one placard per mooring.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, you're right. We didn't really get into the discussion.
So one placard per mooring.
Excuse me, if I may?
Sure.
We, you didn't discuss it because it was already in there. It wasn't a change, and it's not new. It used to be, before I got here, that anybody could get a boater placard. And then we curled, brought it back to one per mooring. But there are a few, and only a few, that have joint ownership. But they have, they have a title or a piece of paper that says they are owner of this mooring with so-and-so. And they share the boat. So there should never be a time when that mooring has more than one car.
Right, well, it shouldn't.
There might be two placards issued to that mooring because there are two owners. And I really want to say there's no more than three, maybe four of those.
I should state, one placard per mooring per owner, up to two, or something like that.
Well, what what you have to do is on your placard, you've got the license plate of the car. You got two plates there because you got two owners on one mooring. One placard.
One placard, yeah, and you can have the two
Two plates.
On the one placard.
It's up to them.
So it's one placard, yeah.
That won't work either because the two owners don't live together.
Well, we understood that. I understand.
So they get, so we don't put, we don't put a license plate on the placard?
Oh, you don't.
We put the mooring number on the
Oh, that's perfect. So this, but that's the point. One placard, and they can
It's transferable.
It's transferable.
They they don't have to live together. They can leave the placard on the boat.
Right, exactly.
I I just, it's it's, again, this is a courtesy, and
Okay.
I think
I I had placards a number of years ago, and they did have a license number on the placard.
Right.
Ten, fifteen years ago.
But then they they get a new car, they get a pretty license plate, the car's on the shelf. But so you want to say one placard per mooring, period?
Period.
Yes.
And then can leave the placard on the boat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to leave the placard on What, Greg? What, Greg?
Let the people figure out how they want to deal with it.
Yeah, that's their problem to figure it out. Because, yeah, this is a courtesy.
They're going to go all the way out to the boat. All the way in.
Got it, I'm sorry to interrupt, thank you.
No, I had another on, at the Masconomo, and is Todd still on? Yep, there he is. Okay. The question was, and my question to Todd was, there's no parking 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Why is it not midnight to 6:00?
You know, I'm not sure that was a long time ago, and I think that was because we had overnight parkers for Bakers Island. And that's when the boater placard came into effect.
Yeah, probably.
I'm not sure why it was 2:00 AM, not midnight.
I mean, why, why not just midnight, I think?
Who issues that for midnight?
I mean, it doesn't matter either way. There's no real issue that we can speak of that, to change it to midnight. Means there's some people down there that are fishing late at night, you know, coming in from their boats. So maybe that's why it was 2:00.
Well, that's why I was wondering on that. Then my last question is regarding who the parking clerk is. Do we need to state, is it, because the new parking clerk is, is it Pat now, Todd?
Parking clerk?
Yeah. Is that in your...
Parking, well, is the parking, are you talking parking enforcement officer or the parking clerk?
The clerk.
The clerk, yeah. Well, it's still run through Diane's office, but the parking officer is going to be Michelle.
So, so these are policies, though, or
Hearing officer.
Typically, they don't put people's names.
No, no, I don't mean names, but I mean, it's the policy of the parking clerk, and the parking clerk is located where?
Oh, which department?
Which department. That's what I'm just trying to clarify. That's it by me.
John, do you have any?
No, I thought it was pretty clear to me.
On the first page of it, resident stickers are valid rather than for the time indicated, until the date indicated.
Okay.
Isn't it, so the tags?
These are, these are the regular tags. They have a date on them. They expire on that date.
Okay, so, all right.
Other tags have, like, the visitor tags are good for between two dates, but this, these are just...
They have an expiration.
They have an expiration.
Yep.
You'd rather say date rather than time.
Yes, until the date indicated. Okay, with those changes, are we prepared to approve the new parking resident sticker policies?
Before we do that?
Yep.
Are we saying 2 to 6 is good at Masco?
I can't imagine officials coming in that way, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. All right. Motion to approve the parking guidelines with the modification to boater placards, one per mooring, per owner.
Visitor parking.
And the visitor parking, Kathy mentioned. Visitor parking, that it's a...
Remove the phrase without off-street parking. Households on, what do we say?
On the streets which are resident only.
On streets, households residing on streets which are resident only are entitled blah, blah, blah.
Change that Ann had from time to date.
Yes, thank you, John.
So those three changes.
I'll second that motion. Did you make that motion, Becky?
I did.
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Ann says yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Great. Energy aggregation update.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Yep.
Thank you.
We had a question from a residence, which I think we all got, about this, and is this something that actually works? And how do they, my question is, how do they separate the green electrons from the brown electrons?
Well, if I could, before we go there, this has already been approved at town meeting.
Okay.
It's just taken us, and Greg's been working on this for some time. So this is already approved.
Okay.
And
Yep.
There we go.
Okay. So it's a question of selecting one.
Selecting the vendor. So after reading the materials, Greg, that was in the package, honestly, I had a hard time distinguishing the differences. So when faced with vendor selection discussions, it's always nice to have a summary. You know, here's vendor one, here's vendor two, here's the criteria, you know, kind of just a one-page matrix. Here's the criteria used for selecting someone, and then you rate each vendor against the criteria, and you get some sense as to where their strengths and weaknesses are. It's worth going through that if there are significant differences. If there are no significant differences, and it's just a price thing, you know, then that's, you might have to go through all the detail. But where's your head here on the comparison?
So they, they are very similar. Price is not an option. The price they charge is set by state law. They're allowed to take one tenth of one cent per kilowatt hour as their fee for the services they provide us. So from a, from a cost perspective, they're both the same. One firm is, is solely dedicated to aggregation, and they have probably doubled the number of towns than, than the other firm. The other firm does work in other areas of energy and utility law, so they, they have a little more diverse focus. We are in the process of checking references and listening to some other communities and their experiences. And so we will pull that together and provide a final set of recommendations for you. I really just wanted to give you an update on where things are.
What about the savings? As part of the program, are they competitive in terms of, they offer different savings options?
Yeah, they're very comparable in terms of the savings that they have been able to realize for, for residents. This is different than, than your typical solicitation that you might be getting in the mail from, from third-party suppliers. So this is, so we use this aggregator, this vendor, to go out onto the market and to, and secure a, a multi-year fixed price for, for electricity on a kilowatt-hour basis. And they, they go out on the market, they advise you when you might want to lock in. You know, sometimes they say, well, the market is, is very volatile right now, you might want to sit out a few months and wait until things settle down. Then they advise us as when it is timely in their minds to lock in a price, and then that price is fixed for the duration of the contract. People do not have to participate. People can always choose not to participate and continue how they're currently purchasing their electricity. National Grid will always be the provider in terms of the wires and being responsible for billing, and National Grid will always be the face that people interact with in terms of reliability and issues with transmission. That stays the same. What will change is, instead of the default supplier through National Grid, you would be getting your electricity through a new supplier. But again, people have the choice of participating or not. So in terms of trying to choose one firm over the other, not quite ready to make that final recommendation. We will provide you a summary of what each, what we feel each strength, the strengths that each bring to the table. But they are, I'll tell you now, they're very similar in terms of their process and track records. As I say, one has done significantly more communities than the other, but they have both done a large number of communities.
So what's, sorry, go ahead.
I, I, so we're getting some references here, Greg. I assume that one of the questions that should be asked is, what's the conversion rate in a community in terms of participation? I don't know whether they get a lot of adoption here. I think the savings are around, what, say, maybe 10% or something?
It'd have to be.
It's, it's not a lot, but there's some. I think the key thing is that it is fairly steady. And National Grid, as we probably all know, about two years ago went crazy.
Right, so National Grid is, is setting a price every six months.
Right, and there's a lot of variability here. There'll be a lot less.
Right, so under, under, under your default service through grid, you know, you typically will pay more in the winter and less in the summer. Through these aggregations, you have a set fee year-round. You might pay a little more than the grid rate in the summer, but you'll pay even less in the winter to offset what you might pay a little more in the summertime.
More than offset.
And yet, typically, what they are seeing is, you know, that 10% range of, of savings.
The other thing, yeah, the other thing, and I attended part of the presentation here, if you've already got a, a third-party provider for your electricity, you have to abide by whatever contract you've got there. You can't just opt into this. You've got to run it out. Or there's a penalty that they have, well, a contract, that's your problem. But once you have the option to move, you can move if you wish. And they say that typically in a, in a community, 10 to 15% of people have third-party providers.
So I think that's a good question to ask, Greg, because this is not, you don't opt in, you have to opt out.
Well, you can opt in also.
But I, but I think the, the way, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, everybody is put in, and then people don't want the service, they have to opt out. It's not an opt-in, it's an opt-out.
That's correct, just like, just like you have to opt, just like you're automatically enrolled in grid current.
Right, exactly.
Although people who are on third-party providers, they will not get that disoffer.
So that's the question, Greg?
Correct.
Okay, so they won't get, they won't be put in the pool because they already have a contract somewhere else? Or do they, or does everybody who has a third-party provider now have to opt out manually?
No, I don't think they put in the pool in the first place.
Yeah.
I can confirm that.
Okay. I had a question. It said that, when I was reading through these, that the town will set energy goals that are representative, who, who in the town would be doing that? Would that be through the DPW, through your...
Ultimately, it's you as, as a board.
Okay, so just like water.
If you want, you know, if you want an advisory group to weigh in on it, you can. So, yes, you can, you can offer different levels of renewable energy as part of the portfolio.
Thank you.
You can go, you can offer what the state requires currently, or you can go above that. You can opt to as far as 100% renewables if you want. Typically, they offer two or three choices.
I think we don't need to do anything on this right now.
Yeah, I wanted to provide an update, and if you had questions, make sure I get them answered for you. And we'll be coming back to you with, with more details and a recommendation.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're at the town administrator's report.
Oh.
Greg?
You ready for me?
Yep.
I'm sorry. So, yeah, very quickly, tomorrow night, there is a forum that the Town Green Organization is sponsoring, impacted climate change, seeing it as a, sort of a broader overview that gets us ready for a set of workshops that will be held at the end of the month. So tomorrow night is a sort of an overview of impacts that we can expect, walk through the simulated hurricane that Harvard did for, for us a year ago or so, and then look at the summary of the Vulnerability Action Plan that Hudson O'Neil did for us last year. And then that will tee up what we will have at the end of the month, end of, end of April, 1st of May, a design charrette, looking at specifically at Masconomo Park, and what kind of a redesign might we want to consider so that the park is more resilient to flooding, may be able to absorb waters, and so remain a park that we can use and, and enjoy. So that'll be a specific project, whereas tomorrow night is more of a broader overview. And then the end of the month, we'll dive into a specific look at Masco and what design options we might want to consider down the road. That was, one of the recommendations that came out of the Vulnerability Action Plan was to take a specific look at Masco and see what sort of new designs we might want to consider going forward. So like I said, that'll, tomorrow night is the webinar that's available. People can sign up through the Town Green website. And then they'll also be doing an hour-long field trip on Friday afternoon at 3:00, meeting at Masco. And then we'll have the Hudson O'Neil Forum Design Charrette the end of April, and the 1st of May, and we'll put up more information on that as the time gets closer.
That will also be available, they're going to take that.
I was going to ask if any of this is going to be recorded.
Yeah, that's going to be recorded. I won't, I have another meeting, so I can't make that, but I'll go on Friday.
Yeah, I'm going to go Friday as well.
Yeah.
So that's that. Second, I just wanted to, let's face it, with you in terms of Andrew Town meeting and holding some open forums regarding the articles, a couple of, a couple of different options. We could meet earlier on the 16th, your next meeting, that's the Tuesday, day after Patriots' Day. And then again, that Thursday, in preparation for a meeting on the 24th. Or would you like to do the 11th and the 18th as two Thursdays as a possibility? Putting out there the different options that you think might make sense in terms of giving people plenty of opportunity to ask questions and get informed on the various articles at town meeting. So, don't know if you have strong preference either way, or if you want to think about it and let us know what to set up.
I cannot meet on the 11th.
I like the 16th.
The 16th is our regular, so you're talking about doing it our regular meeting?
Yeah, what is the...
I'll be black on the 16th.
It's pretty full. It's pretty faulty full.
I'm adding another hour.
Yeah, I, I can't do the 16th, but I don't have to be. Y'all don't have to be at all to meetings, I don't like.
Should we send a text around, or for the eight, you know, see what days are...
I mean, is it the 18th? Can everybody do the 18th? I can do the 18th.
I can do the 18th.
Hmm, questionable.
Do you have a bogey?
What time are you thinking on the 18th?
Yeah.
Thinking of a, you know, 6:30 or 7:00.
For one hour?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
I can do the 18th.
I can do the 18th here, I can zoom in.
Well, that's three of us who can...
Yeah, I'm, I'm flexible, depends on the weather forecast.
Yes.
I'm flexible on the 18th.
I don't, I mean, we don't all have to be there.
No.
Let's shoot the 18th.
Okay.
One session?
One session.
What time, 6:30 or 7?
6:30. 6:30? Is that what you're saying? Greg?
Yeah, 6:30 or 7:00 is typical.
7:00 might be easier for people working.
I'm going to do one, yeah.
Yep.
18:00, 7:00 p.m.
So what do you think could probably be the hot topics?
That's a great question.
School, but we won't be answering that. Let's see.
Should we, I haven't seen anything too boxy called there, has it?
Say it again.
Oh, there's the water service, which there are many questions about. There's the library expansion grant.
And the senior center.
And the senior center.
Those are three. None of them are hot. Some of them are, they're warm.
Yeah, but they're...
They're not.
Which, those questions can be easily addressed.
Should we try to have somebody from the library available to talk about the library?
That might be helpful.
And would you invite, you know, the Manchester members of the school committee, or one of them to answer questions on the budget, or someone from the school district, just in case? We won't be, you know...
I'm not sure we want to, I think that that's...
The school budget is an up or down vote.
That's different, yeah, I don't...
And I think if we try, if during the discussion we get into the details, people get the impression that they get to edit it.
But should we have, we have the library, right? What's the, we need, and we would buy on about the launch? We need chat? Or do we want to just leave it at that?
We can work on getting, you know, the appropriate people in the room and having information.
I think we could get port of health. I mean, the tobacco thing is just, I think, fairly straightforward.
I think we can answer the tobacco thing. It's just that you don't want to have the same information in four different places.
Right, right.
Actually, I think it's good we're having it on the 18th, because if on the 16th, we're going to decide who's going to speak to each article, then we can make sure that...
Probably got some homework.
Right, that's good.
Right. You have...
Tiffany?
Yeah, just, yeah, we'll tee up the time for, we're in-depth discussing about what we're doing with communications and the new website, et cetera. We'll get that teed up for you on the next meeting, so...
The only thing is that is school vacation week. I just thought I'd mention that.
The week of the 16th.
Yeah. That's why we're meeting on the 16th instead of the 15th.
Well, and school vacation week, though, you know...
Doesn't affect everybody.
A lot of people take off now.
Okay.
Lot of sports seasons going on.
There's the 23rd.
That's the night before.
That's before the meeting.
I think that's a little...
Well, it's too close.
It's too close.
Okay.
I think this, I mean, people can add, they can email questions if they have them beyond the meeting.
I think 18th's a good day. It's close enough to town meeting that...
Mm-hmm. They won't forget. Exactly. Week before about, so... Do you want a motion to adjourn?
I want to check with Greg and make sure that we covered all of his stuff.
I'm all set, thank you.
Good.
Motion to adjourn.
Look forward to seeing you back soon.
Yeah, Greg.
Yes, so get that arm elevated.
Oh, wow, there you go. We want to sign your cast.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, I hope you...
We vote to adjourn?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
All right.
We're going to see if my vote for you will...